Call to order of the June 3 Fayette County Board of Education Work Session. Dr. Barrow, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We want to add one action item. This is actually approval of board minutes for May 20th, and that would be adding an action item 7B. That would be the only change. Otherwise, we'd recommend the board approve the agenda submitted.
Okay. Need a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Five oh. All right, we'll turn it over for presentations.
Okay. Our first item to review is dealing with our Sandy Creek High School. They have a proposal they wanted to submit to the board just in order for the board to be aware. It's looking at a parking lot fee proposal. Mr. Smith and I see Coach Garvin back there, Mr. Mann. You guys want to come on up and you can talk about the proposal.
Good afternoon.
Got it. Excellent. Good afternoon. My name is Richard Smith. I'm the Athletic Director at Sandy Creek High School, and just want to kind of talk about the proposal that we're looking at for doing with parking. So, okay, if you'll go to the next slide. And to give you an overview, what we're looking at is, we're looking for revenue stream for the football booster club. Sandy Creek is in a different region than the other four high schools here in the county. So when we look at the schools that are in our region, this is something that four of the schools are already doing, that they have a ticket price they're doing when you show up to the game. And in investigating this, the purpose that they have of this is actually to bring revenue in for their football booster clubs. So what we'd like to do, starting next year, and this would only be for varsity home games. This would not include sub varsity or anything like that. What we're looking at would be a $3 fee. And where this number is coming from is once again, in speaking with the other schools in our region, Central Carroll, Chapel Hill, Cedar Town, that seems to be the standard price that the schools are charging. They've kind of landed on a $3 fee. So our parents are already kind of used to doing this as it is anyway. So it would be consistent with our region schools. And what we would be doing is using the student parking lot and using the faculty parking lot, which are located at Sandy Creek High School. There would be no charge at Birch. There would be no charge for using the parking lot at Flat Rock. There's churches around us. I don't know what they do for parking and that sort of deal. Obviously, that's a private institute. Okay? So if you look at the map here of the school, the parking lots that are in red, those are the two that we are looking at using for the $3 charge. And to kind of get a better detail of those parking lots, if you'll go, that is kind of the layout for the student parking lot. And what we would do is actually have the very first row, that would be for booster club, individuals who are doing, kind of like reserve parking through a booster club, and then the rest of the parking lot fee would be a $3 charge for those. And then the same thing would also apply for the faculty parking lot in the front. So where does this money go? It's a three-fold purpose. Number one is to try to decrease the booster club fees for the parents. Two, eliminate past debts that the booster club does have. And the third would be also for facility improvements for the football booster club area. This could be toward the stadium or toward practice facilities. So Coach Garvin's going to kind of talk about how the organization would be done in operating this.
Thank you, guys, for having us. If you could go back to the actual diagram of the parking lot, I think it'll be, might be a little bit easier to show if you go to the, this one right here. This is the student parking. And I know one of the concerns was not allowing traffic to actually back up on the Jenkins Road and stop traffic on that highway for neighborhoods. Gaelic Glen is right there by the high school. So we devised this plan, and we would use, I've talked to Major Dodson, our commanding officer of our ROTC, and he would, he told us he could get just about as many kids as we needed, and they would get community service hours for manning and helping the booster club man the parking lot. And the way it would work is they would come in off the first entrance right there, close to the fire station, and we would funnel cars all the way down to the very bottom before they would stop to pay. That way, you would get anywhere from 40 to 45 cars in the parking lot before they would start backing up as they pay. And I think we can keep traffic moving without actually obstructing traffic on Jenkins Road. And we would have ROTC cadets stationed to park the cars to actually show people, park here, park here, and work them through the parking lot in an orderly manner to facilitate them getting in and out as quickly as possible. And then, of course, the teacher parking lot, which is actually the next slide, it would be the same. They would come in and come all the way around, and then we would have the cadets funnel them through the parking lot in an orderly fashion. We would need anywhere up to 12 adults from the booster club and about 20 cadets to run this operation smoothly. It would be, we would discuss the meetings, we would do trial runs. It says we have a preseason meeting, one per month, in-season meeting. We meet about every other week as a booster club to discuss how it's going, changes need to be made, you know, how we can make it work better. So hopefully, we would get this passed so we could do a dry run for the scrimmage so that when the actual season starts, we'd have a lot of the boast already worked out of it. So after talking to our booster club parents, we get charged when we go to other places, and that was one of the questions they asked really quick was, why do we not ever charge for parking? And I told them that we would propose a plan and try to get it submitted, so. But thank you very much, guys, I appreciate it. Any questions about the parking for me?
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll bring it back and allow the board to vote on it at the June 17th.
My first question would be, is this just for football? What if the basketball booster club wants to do this? What if another booster club wants to do this?
Yep, okay. The reason, it would be just for football because what we're trying to do is actually generate a revenue stream that the booster club has for their games. Basketball, baseball, they do have independent revenue streams that come in through the use of their concession stands. So this is something that we're just simply trying to do for football, to get them a revenue stream for their booster club. So, yeah, it would just only be football varsity games.
Mr. Smith, if the booster club from basketball or other sports groups approached you, would that be something you would consider or?
I think it'd be worth the conversation to have. I think if that came up, I'd obviously speak with Mr. Mann.
Sure.
As the coordinator of athletics, and then go that route. And obviously, if we went that, I think that would be brought back up to the board to also get input from y'all.
Well, it sounds like a good pilot, just for the football, and then if other people want to consider, we certainly could look at that at a later date.
I know a lot of it in the conversations is making sure that logistically, the booster club has gotten it figured out. And I know one of the things that Coach Garvin with the football booster club is really looking hard at the logistics of the situation so that it doesn't become a detriment, a traffic issue in a lot of ways. Because we obviously do not want to inconvenience the people that live on Jenkins Road.
If we have, and I'm sorry, one more question. If we have people coming in, GHSA passes, are they going to be allowed in like they would with the game?
What we would be, what the other schools do is that for visiting administration and everything like that, they do issue out a certain number of parking passes. The officials park in a different area.
Okay.
So with the visiting schools, that is something that they, we would reciprocate with them is how they do that with us.
Okay.
And I'll say, Dr. Barrow, I've paid, even with my GHSA pass, when we went to Chapel Hill, I still paid my $3 for parking.
Okay. And I didn't know.
I've paid, I've paid at a bunch of events as well with the GHSA pass.
Sure.
I think it's a great idea. The one point that they brought up is something I get a lot of feedback from parents at all the schools, is that decreasing participation fees. And I'm hearing that, you know, the cost to be in a sport, when I played football in high school, I paid $20. My parents wouldn't have had money to pay $1,500 or whatever it was, you know, depending on the sport. Cheerleading, I know firsthand, is $1,400 and change. And if that's a revenue source that we can let our opposing fans help, help our kids take advantage of this stuff without, you know, the financial burden, I love it, so.
On the concession stand at the football games, that revenue goes to the band program, correct?
For the varsity games, yes, sir.
Okay. I think it would be a lot harder to do for basketball, just because of the number of games and having to get that commitment from the ROTC and the volunteers and everything. I think that would be, I think that would be problematic. But I could certainly understand where it'd work for football, where you don't really have, you know, just say you have a handful of home games and that's it.
You know, you brought up the banned parents. I don't know, do other schools for, let's say, banned booster volunteers who are working the game, reserve home spots for them? Or are we going to be charging parents who are coming to work the game for the ban?
What I would like to do on that is actually get with the other high schools currently in our region and kind of getting, because they've been doing this for a number of years.
You know, just to bring up the question.
Right.
How is that handled?
And I know that it was, it's very interesting because I know the two schools, LaGrange and Troop, do not charge anymore. They used to, and they had to stop because it became a manpower issue. Plus, the parking lots that Troop and LaGrange have down at Callaway Stadium actually belong to the Park and Recreation Department down there. So they kind of get a little bit more of a say-so and what's done with that. But to answer your question, I think that would involve, once again, reaching out to how they handle those scenarios. Because the other schools, other than Troop and LaGrange, because Troop and LaGrange, their concession stands are actually operated by the Parks and Rec Department, but everybody else, it's the same thing where the bands do that to help out their programs and everything like that. So I would reach out to them and kind of see how they're handling it also.
And I'll point out, too, there's still free parking at Flat Rock and Birch. And that's why, as we discussed this, that was one thing that I felt was important because at Chapel Hill, and I just use them as a, I know that's where I've been, they did, they offered free parking, but it was, you had to walk. So you had a choice to make. Did you want to walk, did you want to pay the $3? And so it's very, very much in line with what we've experienced at other places.
No student discount?
No, sir.
Coach Garvin? No pressure on you, but if you have a lot more games there this season, you'll get a lot more revenue, okay?
I was thinking of that on the way over. It could be seven games, but hopefully, it'd be a lot more.
There you go. Sounds like a plan.
And just to kind of what he said, you know, we, and I'm sure you guys are already aware, that we have complimentary packets that go out to every school. They get so many tickets that we could include what they, if they give us five, then we can send them five complimentary parking passes as well to give out to whoever they want to give to.
That's reasonable.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Let's move on to item 3B. That's our FY '20 Code of Conduct review. I know Dr. Lombard is here, and he and Mr. Sanders and a lot of our other administrators have been looking at this for a while, and we've got some updates we want to share with you. So, Dr. Lombard, if you will.
As you're aware, every year, we look at our Code of Conduct, our elementary and secondary, and review those and try to make specific changes. Over the last couple of years, we've done quite a few revisions. This year is really fairly minor revisions. You've got the specific list of those changes, and the PowerPoint, you're going to sort of highlight some of those. So based on some changes in policy personnel, our new logo, we're changing some things. We've met with school administrators, district staff, and we've gotten input from parents, students, and stakeholders. We had some minor changes to the vast changes we put in last time on instructional technology with Chromebooks and all that. And then we've changed some phone numbers. We've moved people over here, and I anticipate my office will be moving over here by that time, so we're changing some of those things as well. Next slide, please. Specifically for stakeholder input, I created a Google Doc. We had, we gave out to all of our administrators to share. We've also met specifically with principals and assistants and principals to get their input. We did an online survey, which we had up for two weeks, to get input from parents and other stakeholders. We got over a dozen specific requests. There were some things that we didn't really adapt, like sixth graders should have, you know, be in athletics and that sort of thing. But we got some input on it. Emails from stakeholders, even from students that sent some emails to us. Also, during our normal student, our school council training, we addressed those parents and teachers there and asked them about some of their input. We also, as you're probably aware, meet with NAACP local communications meeting and address several issues with them, and they were very helpful in addressing that. So we've gotten a lot of input. Next slide, please. So here's some of the things we want to do. First, insertion seizures, since we approved that pilot program with our search dogs, we put it in there. And then we're also, some of the schools are using handheld metal detectors. We don't have to put this in there, but we want to clarify what we're doing, so we put that in there. Emergency drills, just to clarify what we're doing, specifically we're doing semi-annual lockdown drills, weather drills, bus evacuation drills, and give the parents some specifics on what we're doing for their information. For book bags, primarily in secondary schools, in reality, we had some book bags in classrooms, especially at the end of the periods. We want to give schools the flexibility, secondary schools flexibility about having book bags in there. Yes, sir?
Dr. Lombard, the current policy is no book bags at all?
That's what it says in the Code of Conduct, but it's been an individual school how they enforce that.
I've got a series of emails, and I was waiting for this presentation, from some of our male students who sometimes find that the size of the women's purse, they want to be able to carry book bags or backpacks, and the size of the women's purses far exceed the size of the book bags, and they were confused on why they couldn't have.
Some of the concerns is having book bags in the aisles, and, you know, if you're trying to evacuate a classroom, or some tripping hazards, those sort of things. One of the other concerns is what are kids bringing into the classroom? And actually, with this interquest thing, we may, you know, deter some people from bringing appropriate things in the classroom with that.
And I know that this, one thing that Dr. Lane has talked about, Fayette County High School versus MacIntosh, is the size of the hallways at MacIntosh compared to what they are at Fayette County. They're smaller classrooms, some classrooms are smaller. So those are, that's why we're making, rather than making it just a blanket county-wide deal, go school by school.
And they can put that in their student handbook, which there's specific directions on that.
Can I go back to number one a minute?
Yes, sir.
And I know this isn't the full wording here, but where it says, random searches by contracted personnel and dogs and use of handheld, the contractors wouldn't be using the handhelds.
No, they would not. Just some of our administrators use that, especially if they're looking for vape devices, and we find that kids tuck those things in inappropriate places or someplace they wouldn't normally search. They can use that one, they can find, and they've had some experience doing that. So it's something that's going on in some schools. We also make sure that, yes, that's something that can be done. And again, doesn't have, it's something we have to have in there by law, but it's something we're going to do. Next slide, please. Couple of things, just for clarity. I mean, principals want to add the word "only" for use of communication devices, only by staff members and administrators for use of electronic communication devices in schools. Of course, now that we have the Chromebooks and one-on-one, we don't use it as much, but sometimes they'll use their phones. Sexual proprieties, we started this year, because we had a number of sexual propriety tribunals, we looked at a first offender status. We had that for drugs possession and influence. We thought we'd try this in sexual proprieties, and it's been very successful, but it wasn't in our Code of Conduct, so we added that this time. And by the way, we've had no recidivism in any of those folks, so it's been popular and worked very well. The next thing is, we have a line there for tobacco and paraphernalia. The principals wanted e-cigarettes to be put in there. We've had four times as many tobacco incidents this year as we had last year, and mostly it was e-cigarettes.
I had a question about that. Someone's done some research on this. Is that the broadest term? There's so many ways to do that, and I just want to make sure you're using the broadest term that covers all the different devices.
We talk about vapes and different oils and paraphernalia and all that within there, which is pretty, it's specific and broad enough to be able to cover what we're having.
And we, that's a great question that we can ask our attorneys as well. They have this now, reviewing it for us, so that's something we can ask and make sure that we have.
Just want to make sure if they invent some new way to inhale tobacco products.
It's hard to keep in front of all that.
That's a great point, because it changed, Dr. Marchman, it changed significantly in the nine months of school this year, and what we were dealing with in August and September, and what we were dealing with by the end of the year. So that's a great point.
Next slide, please. Some of the, the principals wanted, and it's not a change to the, we didn't create anything, address code, just added one thing, head covering, which is among the other things on there. But we had some issues with some kids that wanted to have, where it wasn't a cap, it wasn't a baseball cap, it wasn't a hoodie, but a head covering in there. So we wanted to add that into that. Next slide, please. Transportation and athletics got together and talked about what we had in there. The revision of the statement is in your packet. They just wanted to clarify, make it a little simpler and clearer about our extracurricular activity, transportation, and the fact that parents are responsible. If they have some other alternate transportation for their students, they need to be aware of that, and that we don't assume any responsibility if they make other arrangements for transportation. Next is after-school program. There were some issues that came up about, how do we deal with discipline during after school? And we want to put just a simple statement in there saying, we go by the Code of Conduct, but we handle these things within after-school program. They've got their own progressive discipline guidelines within that, but we'll make sure that principals understand or inform if there's some kind of serious incident that happens. Next slide. Technology, since they're allowing students to have access to educational YouTube, they want to put a particular statement in there, making sure the parents could opt out for that if they wanted to. They updated the pricing for Chromebooks if they were lost or damaged, and their accessories such as the cases or the chargers and those sort of things, and just some updating wording and terminology. So certainly, much less than we did last year. We added about eight pages of the Code of Conduct, just on technology.
Dr. Lombard, if I can, and I'll jump in here with Mr. Farmer, if you want to make any comments. The whole issue with regard to technology and trying to provide guidance for young people, we know that there are things out in the world that we don't want our young people to have access to. With technology, kids are really smart, and they can figure workarounds quite frequently. One of the, we feel that there are some really, really tremendous learning resources in the YouTube platform. So we're trying to prevent the negative things that are out there, but give access to our teachers and our students based on things that they can and would benefit them in their educational career. So we've, we've had this request for quite some time. We've been working on this, golly, for more than a year, trying to get our arms around it. And there are some districts that let everything open, and, you know, it's the wild, wild west out there, and we didn't feel like that was appropriate. But we needed to come back in and work on this, and I feel like we're at a point, very close, so that we can begin to start this this fall. Knowing that parents may find something that they don't like, that their kids have accessed, that's where we're going to have to work with our parents and our community to help us with that. What's not appropriate in your home, you know, I want parents to feel comfortable and tell them, don't look at that. And the things that we want to have access to in school, our teachers will go through some approval process, and we'll be able to make that available across the board. But this is something we've worked at for a long time. Mr. Farmer, I don't know if you want to make any comments or not, but I know that technology, digital services have been working on this for quite some time. So since it's coming up in the Code of Conduct, we felt like we just needed to make a point about this.
And the way it's going to be set up, it is in the restricted mode that YouTube has for educational content. So it's not, we're not opening up YouTube. So it is in limited educational content only.
One of the positive things with the Chromebooks, we've seen electronic communication device discipline go down this year, so that's a, that's a good thing. Next slide, please. So where to go from here? Well, as Mr. Sanders says, we're going to get Harbin, Hartley, and Hawkins to review the draft. We will finalize this, and we will, we're going to put that, this information back out to our stakeholders to look at again. We'll, I plan on coming to our board meeting on the 17th of June to come and get approval from you. You will have in basically texts like from these with that, you can look at. And then we will print. We have, we have a contract to print these off and then send them out to our, and distribute them out to our schools before the beginning of the school year. It's a tight deadline, but we should be able to make it. The other thing we do is we have progressive discipline guidelines, we provide our administrators, we've already gone through and reviewed all those. We'll update those things and get those out to our schools. Any questions?
I just want to make a comment on the technology, because you're absolutely right, Dr. Barrow. We've tried a lot of different deterrents in our home, and we've found that it's much more effective to capture the heart of the child and to capture the device. And also the belief that I can see every single thing they do, whether I can or not. Their belief has been very effective, too. So we have the ability to monitor what these Chromebooks are accessing on.
And working into rounds, the kids are finding on this thing, too. They're very creative.
Did, did you say you're still going to go back and check wording? Because when I looked on the Code of Conduct, Code of Conduct recommendations, the second one there, replacing the paragraph where it says, "The signature of a parent guardian on this page gives your child as having your permit," that doesn't quite...
Right, okay, we'll look at that. We'll look at the wording on that.
Okay. And if there's anything else, as you're going through board members, that you find like that, I mean, I know we've had a lot of people look at this, but we're always trying to tighten it up just as, so it'll be perfect when it goes out, but...
I Googled it, and according to review on Google, it says it's correct English, but, you know, reading it, it doesn't flow. You know, something like maybe, "The signature of a parent guardian on this page gives your consent for your child," or something like that. It gives your child, blah, blah, blah. It just doesn't flow.
Try grammar.
Okay.
I had another comment or question or something. I'm looking at the document where you actually showed us all the changes, and I'm looking at the student transfers, and I was just noting that today starts the two-week period where we can do HP251.
Yes, sir.
And I believe February is where we do the other type of transfers, where you just request.
Voluntary.
Yeah, voluntary transfers. And six years ago, when we had the school closures, the board gave a directive to be very lenient. If a parent wanted to change schools, then it was an automatic yes, almost, space available. And so we've got that policy, JBCCA, I believe. And I was just wanting to kind of pull the board and see if that's still the board directive, or if we, what's our thought on school choice? Because Dr. Barrow is very supportive of that on several occasions, and I'm just worried that, how that transferred to our practice here. And I know there's reasons when we shouldn't do that. Being able to have a discussion earlier, he gave me some good reasons where we shouldn't do that. But I just want to know what our current interpretation of that policy is.
I don't mind making a comment, Dr. Marchman, with regard to that. We, you know, as we've talked about, we actually have two ways of allowing students and/or parents' choice. A lot of systems only do the required House Bill 251, but we actually have two methodologies there. We have issues that we look at as far as class size and available space at facilities. There's a few because of large numbers there that we've set are no-transfer schools because we don't want to be overcrowded and create problems for ourselves. But typically, if it's where we can and the parent is good about providing the transportation and there's no other extenuating circumstances, I know that we've had as much as 60, 70% of the requests asked, we've tried to grant. I don't know what the numbers are this year, but, you know, I think that's good. When we can do that, I think that we have to be careful, though, and it's done. I will say this, I think Dr. Lombard does a very fair job. He's very consistent, and we certainly want to, if a student, a parent wants to be somewhere, typically, they're going to perform better if they get where they want to be. That's my thought. So we want to be encouraging, but we also know that we have to plan, we have to allocate staff, we have to build in financing for allocations and budgeting, so we have to have a pretty good idea, but we work with parents, I will say that.
I've talked to a couple of parents over the past few years where they had a really hard time articulating why. Maybe it was a bullying situation, but they really want to call it that because it wasn't quiet, but it was almost, and they didn't get the transfer because they couldn't really articulate the reason. And I was just hoping that it was still easy to make those transfers or spaces available. And I was just hoping it was still easy to make those transfers or spaces available.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, if we are eager to grant every transfer request, we also fall into supporting sort of a lot of the stereotypes about different schools that we try so hard to fight against as well. And so, you know, I think, you know, that's a danger too. And if we allow anyone to transfer for any reason, you know, we fall into that trap.
That might be true, but I think when a student wants to transfer because they love the music program at Fayette High or because they love performing arts at Stars and the Elder, there's a, if it's a program reason, I think that should be more apt to be an automatic yes than, you know, some preference reason.
And we have looked at programs and curriculum differences is one thing they can apply for. Of course, it depends if there's room in those programs. We've had some issues with like automotive programs are so jammed up, they didn't have any room for them to go in there. Of course, ROTC programs and others are available. And, but for the most part, we have some, you know, equally good programs and fine arts and those things in our schools.
Room is becoming the, our biggest challenge that we're facing. And you look at the, the numbers for House Bill 251, especially at the elementary, middle school level, it's, it's tight. We have a lot of, a lot of red in the sheet that Ms. Robertson provides to us. So that is, that really has become...
Well, and when you have, for example, I'll use this as an example. Let's say you have a second grader and a fourth grader at the school. You may have room in the second grade, but not room in the fourth grade. And parents will say, well, I, I'm not going to send one of my children there. And that, though, we have to work through those issues there. So I, I don't know that we want to have automatic guesses, but I will say this, we're going to bend over to try to accommodate our parents.
And we work with the principals also on specific choice. We had a case where we had a student who was changed to a site, social site program. They wanted their child to go, so we're trying to work with them, with the principal and do that. We have over 1,600 kids in social permission. About half of those are employee students. So we have, we're working a lot with that.
Yeah, I just wanted to revisit the topic, make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, and part of our discussion today was, as a high school principal, you know, I don't have a problem taking a student for an academic program and, and the transfer for an academic program. But when you start selecting, I want to be in this band program and I want to be, Dana's going to be, I want to be on that softball team, I want to be on that football team. And you have to be careful as far as looking at that academic programs and also that if a student comes for an academic program, they stay in that program.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and we accommodate. We did when I was old principal, we accommodated those, but just because I don't like this school or I don't like this football coach or I don't like, you know.
Yeah. I appreciate what you guys are saying, but the purpose of that law, I don't think it fits, even though I understand why you say it and I would probably say the exact same thing, but I don't think the purpose of the law is designed for us to arbitrarily decide based on why we think they're moving. I mean, I would, I would leave it open to the lawyers to interpret, but I do think the intent is space available, allow them to move. And beyond, if they want to go because they don't like the green at Macintosh and they're, they're into baby blue and they want to go to Stars Mill, let them go.
In House Bill 251, you're...
I believe that's the point of the law, right?
Yeah.
I agree personally with Mr. Rayball on his comment.
Two different.
Yeah, they're two different, two different ones. The House Bill 251 that we're in now, that is the law that is for space available.
Space.
And that's, they don't, they don't have to provide us a reason for, for that. Then if they, if we have five seats open and 10, 10 kids apply, we have, we have a lottery and, and draw it. So there, there is none. I think Mr. Rayball's more talking about the February special permission time when they do that, they do give reasons why they're wanting to move and that type thing.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? We're going to put this out and if you have any questions, please feel free to email those to me or Dr. Lombard directly and we'll take a look and...
Yeah, one more comment on that, I'm sorry, is when you decide there are how much space is available in a school, I know you've got a lot of, a little bit of wiggle room with that number. And you say there's 10 seats, you could say there's 10 seats or maybe you could say there's 20 seats. How do you decide any seats are available at a school?
Guys, you want to respond to that or? I, I can give you a real general one, you may be able to go ahead.
Because we could say there's no seats available in any school and then, but what's that based on?
We get input from human resources based on allotments of teachers and, you know, there's a state maximum. We set our own maximum with the board and then we try to leave, basically we say it's about 80% so that we have room for move-ins because obviously by state law, you have to be able to go to the school that you're in. And so we'll have some issues with people moving in. So it's approximately 80% of that, the board ceiling on that.
Right, so could you get waitlisted if you were denied under HSP 251?
Actually, we do for House Bill. If somebody's denied, we do the lottery, but if someone says, well, I just can't handle the transportation, we'll keep the waiting list on that. We keep track of who's on, pulled on, we have a chabingo thing. We pull a number and we track those. We can, we have a waiting list on that.
And often, I mean, it's not unusual then for someone to change their mind.
Right, right.
And we have, and Dr. Marshman, if they, if we have five seats available and six or seven apply, we work, typically work with the schools to try to make those, those happen. I think last year, we just about had 100%.
Almost.
We were able to make work. So it's just conversations that we have to have with the school.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that we don't want to have happen is if we self-inflict the wound and that, that could be, that one or two kids could be the next $50,000 kid because we have to hire another teacher to break another class. So we try to be, you know, careful with that and it's not, this is not done in isolation. I, I will say that. These guys are working very closely with the principals, with student services and enrollment and we try to, try to be good customer service reps with our parents, but we also have to protect based on budgetary and placement concerns.
Thanks for the discussion.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Lombard.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, sir. We have a presentation by Mr. Gray. He's going to speak a little bit about the ESPOST accounting questions that we've had. Tom's got a presentation for us and hopefully we'll be able to answer any specific questions that the board may have either during or after the presentation. So, Mr. Gray?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bear and Board. Yeah, recently, there were some comment, comments made at a board meeting that the school system in the finance department was mainly focused around three areas. Illegally commingling ESPOST funds in other accounts, transferring ESPOST funds to interest-bearing accounts for the purpose of generating revenue, and no accounting of interest earnings to the board or to the public. So we're hoping we can show you how we've, are answering those issues. So first off, just kind of an overview, you already know what ESPOST is, 1% sales tax. We are collecting on ESPOST 3 right now and it's about 20 to 24 million dollars per month. The state law requires an annual audit. It's called a performance audit and that is conducted by an outside audit firm. And, and at this point, they've gone through, you know, each year and done that and we'll just do a little, if you dig into our website, you can see where that information is. It's taken a little longer here than it did before, sorry about that. But if you go down here to page six, apologize for that, that keeps coming up. I've restarted this thing a couple of times. You'll see that within the audit, it talks about, based on their audit, the conclusion is that our SPOST program is compliance with all applicable laws and regulations related to the referendum. And one of the audit guidelines in particular was that looking at was the, I'm going to find that one, it was, the determine whether it is effective means of monitoring the program with timelines and projects and determine the liability of the expenditures not exceeding budgeted amounts. And then the effectiveness between management of the school system and the Board of Education communicating the status of SPOST projects to ensure that all the goals are met and the objective met. In other words, are we reporting as to the board, to the public, the ESPOST program? All right, so continuing on with what ESPOST is, the structure of our ESPOST fund. So each ESPOST fund is segregated into, from the other funds and each, when I say each ESPOST, each ESPOST referendum, so there's an ESPOST 1, 2, and 3, they are separate referendums. They each have their own investment account and their own checking account. Now, the investment accounts are run by the Office of the State Treasurer's Office and, and that's by our choice. We can put those wherever we want, but we use what's called Georgia Fund 1, which we'll get into a little bit more. But the Department of Revenue deposits the collections each month into the investment pool at Georgia Forward Fund 1. And the interest earnings, we report those to the board each month.
So Tom, just...
Yes.
So you don't touch the money? So the Department of Revenue deposits the money direct into this account?
Yeah, they, they do. And then from there, we might make some transfers or whatever when we're doing vendor payments. And I'm going to show that in a little bit. So now the other question is, do we have authority to invest public funds? And the answer is yes. Georgia law is very specific about that. And investing educational funds, it is lawful to invest school funds, securities of the state, United States, or municipalities of the state or in CDs. Also, local governments may invest money in the Fisher Code of Georgia 3683-4. Government authority of any local government, which we are a local government as a school system, may invest and reinvest any money subject to its control and jurisdiction. This includes SPOST funds. So that's the key point. School system has the authority by law to invest SPOST funds. All right, so what are we doing with Georgia Fund 1? Again, it's administered by the State Treasurer's Office. There's a local board resolution that's required for the school board to approve us to be in that fund. We did those back in March of 2018 and March of 2016 are the most recent that are applicable. The investments meet the state requirements for investments held by local governments, which is in the Georgia Code. And the interest earnings are reinvested directly into each account separately. So got a little summary here going back and I'll even show you some detail when we get further in the presentation, but of what we've had over the last several years of interest. So you can see it's broken down by fund with general and other operating. The general and operating are combined in one account. However, debt service, SPOST 1, 2, and 3 are all in their own separate LGIP accounts. So you can see over the years what the interest has done. And as we'll allude to a little bit later, the, we've gone up quite a bit with our earnings in all the accounts, mostly because the market has been doing well. And as we've had some cash, we've been able to maximize that. Also, why is, why are we getting so much interest? Well, Georgia Fund 1 yield has been pretty high, as you can see recently, 2.41, if you compare that to several years ago. So you can look back in 2014 and 2015, it was less than 0.25 all during that time. And the recent improvement in the economy has allowed for greater interest earnings. So right now it's paying 2.45%. And that's on the cash balance outstanding at the time. So we try to maximize what cash is with the LGIP in each account. We keep a little bit in the local checking account so that if we do have an invoice we have to pay immediately, we've got $100,000 on hand to do that. So, but the goal of the LGIP is safety of capital liquidity, investment income, and diversification. So those are all met by using Georgia Fund 1. Here's the Georgia Fund 1 accounts we mentioned. We have one for the operating fund, one for SPOST 2009, one for the debt service, one for SPOST 2. We have two accounts related to SPOST 3. The construction account is where we put the bond proceeds from the bond issue back a couple of years ago. We don't have direct control over that account. That's controlled by Regions Bank. They are the fiscal agent for the bonds. And then we have a regular SPOST 3 account. So as we spend down the bond proceeds, we'll close the construction account once we're just in the complete collection mode. But the operating fund account balances are tracked internally for each fund, but we still maintain those separate from SPOST funds. More on the accounting operations for the SPOST funds. Okay, so each LGIP account is used as the main holding place for the SPOST funds until needed for vendor payments. Interest on ESPOST funds are, is expended only on ESPOST projects. The management of these funds maximizes investment income, like we said before, and then we manage it for cash flow purposes. Funds are transferred from LGIP to the bank ESPOST checking account when it's needed for vendor payment. So when we have a run of checks for a vendor that would need to be paid, that's when we transfer monies from the LGIP SPOST account to the, to the SPOST checking account. Now, projects may be at times funded by multiple projects. Sometimes we use local capital projects fund, we get state grant money. Sometimes we had projects where a school itself or Booster Club was putting in some funds. So when that happens, we take that fund and we put it into the SPOST account and treat it as SPOST funds going forward. So as draw, this is added, I think, from what you guys had before, but I thought it'd be good to have a diagram of what this looks like. So, let me get my little pointer here. So over here, you have the ESPOST for the, and LGIP. And again, there'd be, there's, there's one for each SPOST. Department of Revenue brings the sales tax in. As interest is earned, it's deposited into the LGIP account. The only flow between that LGIP account and the, is to the SPOST checking account for payments going out. Over here on the operating side, when we get payments or revenue from the Department of Education or the Tax Commissioner, they're deposited in, deposited into our checking account. We do the same thing over here with operating funds. We transfer those up to the operating, to the LGIP account to offset in the checking account, the service fees that the bank requires. We usually need about 10 to 14 million dollars down at the bank a level. And then that way we offset all of the fees. So we do that. Anything else, we throw it to the LGIP account. Any interest earned over here goes down there. But again, any interest earned in the ESPOST LGIP account goes to the ESPOST payments. Now, occasion, like I said before, we do have some projects that may require additional funding outside. So if that funding is over here in the operating checking account, it would be transferred over into the SPOST account when it's needed for payment or even before. But once we transfer it over there, it is treated just like ESPOST funds. All right, so the reporting on the ESPOST earnings. Financial reports are presented each month. You, you guys are well aware of that and they're on E-Board. Goes in several different areas. The cash on hand report shows the balance of all the different ESPOST funds. Then we have the ESPOST expenditures and revenue page that shows the interest earnings for each one of those separately, each SPOST is separately. And the general fund interest is reported separately. So if we go back to this last April board meeting, I mean, the May board meeting, we reported on the April 30th. This was the cash on hand. You can see how it's broken down between cash and investments. The investments for each of the SPOST is designated to each SPOST. And then if we go down a little bit, the report on the general fund, fund balance, you'll see there's a column there where the interest is reported separately for the general fund. And then on each of these ESPOST reports, you'll see up here in the revenue section underneath, it says interest earnings. And so here's SPOST 1. We've reported on interest earnings since 2009 for SPOST 1. Here's SPOST 2. We reported on interest earnings since 2014, all the way through the current year. And on SPOST 3, we just have the 2018 and 2019 interest earnings so far. So the interest earnings are reported. These reports are available to the public as part of the E-Board. And I won't go to the CAFRA because it's pretty, pretty long, but there is also interest in aggregate entity-wide is reported as part of the audit process in the CAFRA each year. All right, just briefly on the bond proceeds, back in July of 2018, we issued $25 million of bonds to be repaid from SPOST 3 revenues. That was for the Fayette County High School renovation and Macintosh High School additions mainly is the reasons we had did that bond issue to advance to fund it. And the funds are held in the LGIP account, like we said, under the control of Regions Bank. So we don't have access into those funds until we prove to them we have invoices that are valid for those projects to pay. We request the funds to come down. We did ask them to use the LGIP account as well though, as the investment vehicle because we felt like it was consistent with our program that we already had in place. So then we do the drawdowns as expenditures occur, like we said. Now, this is also... Now, this is also reported each month to the board on that Sloss 3 report. There's a section that shows. We changed it around a little bit. Now it shows more detail in one place, but the drawdowns are shown there each month. So in summary, the school district maintains separate checking accounts and investment accounts for each Sloss referendum. Funds are only used for the purposes in the referendum, including interest earnings. State of Georgia makes E-Sloss deposits directly into our interest-bearing LGIP account. They wouldn't do that if it was illegal. Georgia law specifically allows for local governments to invest funds, including E-Sloss funds. Interest and investment earnings from Sloss is deposited in Sloss accounts, and it is reported monthly to the board. And the board has approved resolutions allowing for the use of the LGIP accounts for Sloss funds. So the school district's E-Sloss finances are compliant with state laws reported in the annual CAFR and the Sloss performance audit each year. And that's the summary. If there's any comments or questions.
Thank you. This is, this is an issue I know Mr. Gray and I both take very seriously. And certainly, we want the community, the taxpayers, all of our citizens to feel very, very confident about our financial practice and what we do on a day-to-day, month-to-month, year-to-year basis. I feel like with this explanation, we've fully covered any questions that were raised about the E-Sloss process that we follow. Clearly, if there are other questions that we need to answer, we, our books are open all the time. And we would encourage those that may have questions to ask those, and we'll work to try to answer those for you. But most of this information is really available to the public already through the information we post on our website every month. So clearly, I appreciate Mr. Gray and his staff, his staff's thoroughness in reviewing this process. And hopefully, we've answered any outstanding questions that may have been out there.
And I just want to thank Mr. Gray and his staff. As a board, it's important that we be transparent. And I appreciate this extra level of transparency that we've had today.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
I have a question. That's a great job, Tom, because that completely explains the E-Sloss issue. But there were other issues raised. And Mr. Anderson had asked for some documentation, and I'd also asked for that. And there was an open records request. And I think we just wanted to see what was in that open records request and also the items that this employee was asking for. And so, so I just wanted to see the full scope of the allegations and the documentation that she wanted to look at that would back up her claims, so to speak. And I feel like the E-Sloss issue is, I think, I feel like were very appropriate there. But I don't know what other issues she raised because we haven't seen those documents.
Those documents that were raised are the same ones we got that were sent to you directly by that individual. So if there are specific questions that you want us to answer, Dr. Marshman, I am happy for us to do that. I know I've talked with Mr. Gray this afternoon. I will say this, some of the, some of the questions that were raised, we, it's not that we can't pull the information together, but it's typically not presented that way in normal reporting fashion. But we're happy to provide any information that you or any other citizen wants. Now, the board, you're absolutely entitled to that. We want to provide that to you. For regular citizens, when it's not something that we typically report out in, it's not a monthly or weekly reporting fashion, we have to go back in. Our finance department has to stop what they're doing, and they have to go and pull that and pull it into reports, copy it, prepare for it. And that, there is an expense with that. We try to do it at the very lowest level possible, and we're happy to do that for any citizen. But we don't have the resources to just go and pull at random. And we ask citizens if they want the information and they want hard copies, that we're going to have to copy it because we can't use our tax dollars to do that, or at least we don't feel comfortable in that. But if there's specific questions, please feel free to get those to me and/or Mr. Gray.
My specific question, and maybe I can make this a form of emotion, is I would like for the board to be provided with the open records request. And that's, that's my specific question.
Okay, well, it was my understanding that you already had that information, but we'll go back and pull that.
She, she, did you go through all the exhibits?
Yeah, but I didn't see the documents that she was looking for. I don't believe. And maybe if we already had that information, you can direct me to it. And, but I wasn't thinking that I had that information.
Okay, Mr. Gray, any comment?
Well, Dr. Barrow, I want to say, the information that was originally sent, there were some copies of things that the employee already had. She asked for additional copies and copies of emails and every single contract going back. So we, just as it is required under the Open Records Act, we looked up the information that would need to be, what it would take, who could pull that information, how long it would take, and what it would cost to do that. We provided that information to the individual who made the request. They did not respond in asking to have that information. So since the person that made the request did not pay for it, we didn't spend any time following up on the request. Everything that she already had, she had sent to you, as well as the information, additional information that she was requesting. If you go look at that, you'll see that is pretty extensive. It's not that we don't want to do it or can't do it. It's that the time involved, we need to make sure that is going to be done appropriately.
So that's...
Well, it's like I said earlier, I'm satisfied with the E-Sloss because I heard what she said, and I think that she might have misspoke or misunderstood some things. And I'm very satisfied with your explanations. But I just want to make sure we understand all of the allegations she made and make sure that we're transparent on all of the allegations and make sure we've cleared ourself on all of those.
We're, we're happy.
Listen to the board member wants that information too, then I'll...
We'll try to provide whatever you need. I think that's appropriate. And, and we've also talked about the position, if the board wants us to have external auditors come in, and if you all are willing to pay for that, then we'll do that too.
You know what, to that, to that point, I wasn't willing to pay to answer your question. I'm confident in the answer we have in reviewing the CAFRs and stuff. But aren't we going to be audited again in a couple of months, two months, three months?
I sent that out, I think, a little bit later. We, I think in September, Tom, they actually come and start bringing their work reports.
Yeah, they'll be doing their field work in September and October.
So we can ask them to do it then. I mean, I'm happy to do that.
If you want to address it then, we can. But it seems silly to pay now and then pay in September for something that I feel like, like Barry said, we've answered.
Well, understand, if we go beyond the scope of the audit that we've already contracted for, it will cost more.
Yeah, but that's, that we can do that.
I don't think the cost is really the issue if it's what you need to get the answer that you're looking for.
I just think it's a shame that the comments were construed by some people that there is any... I mean, I felt like your answer was very thorough and, you know, I, as always, appreciate the answers. But the reality is, we've, I think we actually, as, as strong of a system we have from an academic standpoint, we may even be stronger on a finance standpoint if somebody actually took the time to look at all the audits consistently. If I remember the gentleman who was here a few months ago from, is it Malden and Malden?
Malden, yes.
I believe he said it was one of the, I can't remember the exact phrase he used, but, you know, just, it was off-the-chart good, you know, to take, to take out of, out of context. And, you know, it had a lot of kudos. And he's, he used it as a reference for other districts around the state. So I felt pretty good about that, knowing that I can look at all the audit reports. I can see these exact things. And then obviously, this additional answer, I don't, I don't see it. I mean, I'm open to, I'm open to doing more, but I feel like spending money for the sake of spending money is silly when we already have audits that address the exact question, and then we addressed it again today. We referenced state law, we referenced the account numbers. I'm not sure what else we can do, but I'm willing to support it if there's something else you guys think we can do.
I just want to make sure we've answered all the questions.
Yeah, no, for sure. Like, but, but you don't even think there's any E-Sloss issue at this point? Yeah, yeah, so E-Sloss, I think, is off the table.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Anderson. I'm not willing to spend the money for an outside audit either. I think that, you know, we've done our job, and we're going to be audited again in September.
I do, to Barry's point, though, is the one thing, you know, I feel like we all reacted appropriately from a fiduciary standpoint. You know, I know all of us had sent emails and talked to Dr. Barrow and/or Tom. But the other allegations that were more, it's not really more personnel, right? More personnel-related. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, the way I, the way I see my job is, we're on the board from a policy, from a strategic standpoint, from a finance standpoint. That's why that one really, I know when I talked to Scott, he and I were, you know, obviously, you don't want those kind of accusations, nobody does. But personnel, it's on you, Dr. Barrow. And, you know, we, we support you in that. And, you know, if there's some allegation that, you know, that, inside a personnel that directly, you know, affects the board, then maybe it's different. But in general, the personnel stuff, I, you know, it's, as much as I would love to get into everything, I mean, we'd be here 40, 50 hours a week if we did.
And my main interest is the financial allegations.
Yeah, for sure.
But I also want to make sure, you know, we want to check. We had a survey a couple of years in a row to, we were wondering what the climate was and if there is a climate that people can express their ideas and concerns and not fear retaliation. So, and I think the survey's pretty positive on that respect.
Yeah. Any other comments? We can move on to facilities update.
Okay, Mr. Satterfield's going to come up and actually share an update with you. I think he's got some photographs that we'll be happy to share with the audience here as well. So, Mr. Satterfield?
All right, good afternoon. Try to be quick with this. We do have a few photographs. And I want to say right up front, I did not take these photographs. So, but I think that you'll enjoy them. Kay, can you run through the photographs? Do you have those? All right, this is your addition at McIntosh, basically taken from about second base, looking toward the new addition. So where you see McIntosh, that's basically the centerfield fence.
So those baseball tickets are going to be extra if you're watching from that field, right? From that building?
That's right. This is taken from inside the courtyard, looking at the multipurpose portion of the building. That area with the large glass window is a 60 by 60 room with about a 25, 26-foot ceiling in it that can be used by a number of groups. There's an interior shot of that, that room. The first shot that we had from the baseball field pretty much gave you all the classrooms. There's six classrooms on each floor. This is another interior shot of the multipurpose room. And you can see that it's got a good, good height to the ceiling. So if we have any cheerleaders practicing in there, I don't think they have to be concerned with hitting the ceiling in this building. But it turned out to be a nice, nice facility. All right, just to run down where we are on all the projects. Still doing a few little punch lists at Stars Mill Rising Star. Oh, you got the, we'll, we'll jump back. This is the Auditorium at Fayette High from, looking from Tiger Trail toward the new facility. This is an interior shot of the auditorium from the stage looking toward the front of the building. This is a shot from the front, looking toward the stage.
Mike, do you know the approximate seating?
About 575, I believe, including handicap seating. And did you have any band tower in there? These next few shots, I did not take these pictures. I want to make clear that.
But I did want, there are two band directors that are smiling with big smiles. So I think they're very happy.
There's a shot as they were setting the roof on the band tower. It has just a little bitty, a small, maybe like four-foot by eight-foot roof over the top platform. They, they put that tower up in about a day and a half. And here's a shot up on top of the band tower, looking at, over their practice area in the parking lot. They seem pretty excited. So we're glad, that's the first one that we've been able to get completed, and we're glad to have one of them in, completely done. So that, that's good. At Fayette County High, contractors working on the first floor modifications this summer. That's basically all your science classrooms, your CTAE. So he'll have a good bit of work to do there this summer. And then he'll also have to do the hallways on the, both first and second floors. Auditorium, we did get the CO earlier this year, and contractors working on the last few punch list items there. Same way with Peoples, that was pretty much punched out. McIntosh, we did get last week our certificate of occupancy on the addition, turned it over to the school, and contractors working on, on his punch list. Probably be about another three or four weeks before he has it completely punched out. LEC, of course, we do have the CO for A and B building. Contractor working on the last few little punch list items. Oak Grove Elementary, the architect has been consulting with the school's principal on design. And he's about 75% complete with the construction drawings. I believe we will be able, within the month, to hand those over to Mija, who is, was selected as a construction manager for the project. And from there, they'll be able to give us a GMP to bring back to the board for that project. At, they have already provided us with a GMP for the site work on that project. At JC Booth, the new booth, which we're referring to as Stagecoach Road Middle School, the architect has been consulting with school officials. And we've had a number of groups from Booth that have come and given input on that. He's about 50% through with the construction drawings. We think probably toward the end of July, we'll be able to hand those over to Mija for them to work up a GMP. And so our, our goal is at September board meeting, I mean, August board meeting, to bring that to the board for their review. And hopefully, we can break ground sometime in September. Safety and security upgrades. The contractor's about 75% complete with installation of the new doorways to create the security vestibules. I would think he's going to be through by about the end of June. He should be through with those. The Sandy Creek High School Film Lab modifications. The contractor's already completed demolition in the film lab. He's installed concrete block, and they're working on mechanical plumbing, electrical roughens at this time. Of course, that is a summer project. We need to have it completed before school starts back. High School trap proposals, that was a project in the E-Sloss 3. And purchasing has sent out RFPs, and we got those in in the last couple of weeks and have reviewed those and are ready to make some recommendations to the board in those areas. I think our, our hope was that, we certainly didn't want to try to do all five schools in one summer. We felt like that was a little bit too much to bite off. But we thought we would possibly try to do maybe the two worst. try to do, uh, maybe the two worst tracks, uh, this summer and follow up next summer and maybe do the other three.
Mike, if you don't mind, that's item C. Why don't we go ahead and discuss that and, um, and, and the two tracks that we were hoping to be able to do, uh, this summer were, um, Whitewater High School and McIntosh, those two.
Yeah, those two.
And, but we've got a bid or a quote for all five tracks over this summer and next summer. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. We did get a quote. Um, we just met last week, uh, Mr. Sanders, um, and myself and Purchasing met with athletic directors and the head track coaches from each of the schools and, uh, showed them a number of samples. And, and the one we came up with was, was not the top of the line by any means, but it, it was a, a, a good track surface. In fact, I, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong with this, Mr. Sanders, I believe it. It's the same surface they had at the state track meet, uh, that was held in Carrollton. Uh, it's a good product. It's one that, that, uh, it comes with a five-year warranty, but in five or six years, you could come back and recode it to, to extend that three or four more years. So we feel like we can get a good ten years out of this particular surface. Uh, some of the surfaces below that, you didn't have that ability to resurface them. And, and we really didn't think we would get but about five years out of those. Um, and, um, this seemed to be a good product and, and across the board, the track coaches liked it. And so that's the one we, we based our recommendation on. I believe, um, I don't have that in front of me, but I believe it ended up being about one point six million, uh, for the five schools. Um, now that includes just removal of the existing track surface and putting the new track surface in. That number does not include any, uh, repairs. Let's say when they pulled the track off, if there was a bad spot in the asphalt, uh, a depression or crack or where water could infiltrate and they wouldn't have to make repairs, there would be an additional cost for that. Uh, so we felt like it was probably reasonable. I believe, uh, we had two million in the East Splosh as our overall budget. We felt like it was probably reasonable just to use that number, even though it's four hundred thousand more than their bid. Uh, but just to give us some, some
Contingency money.
Contingency money there in case we, we're not anticipating running into a lot of stuff. But we felt like that would be reasonable and that's what we were asking the board to do.
Hey Mike, on the, uh, on the vendors, I saw the one you picked and, you know, it, it looked really good. There was one vendor that had a similar score on your algorithm, but there was no dollar amounts. Did they just not submit?
Yeah.
There was, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. They, they didn't, uh, they didn't provide that, uh, a comparable surface. They, they're, they only provided the, the, the very base uh, surface which was permeable and the issue with that was water going down in there and freezing during the winter. So they, we, we didn't have a, a surface to compare apples to apples on, on the one we chose. That's right.
Yeah. Purchasing did a real good job of, of going through there and there were a number of vendors that didn't provide four or five of, of the requirements that they asked for. Uh, one didn't provide any samples. All gave us a price, but no samples. Uh, and there were some that maybe didn't, uh, you know, supply references or whatever. So there was a score and rubric that Purchasing went through and, and this is how it scored out.
What we like most about this company is they're relatively local. They're from Whitesburg, which is what, thirty minutes maybe max? The other companies were from Texas, North Carolina, maybe. And getting them, when you have an issue, getting them out, you know, can be, be troublesome. And so we were very pleased that we had a local, a relatively local company that we can get, we feel like we can get here.
The, the last time we, we redid all, all the tracks, uh, which was about ten, ten years, uh, I believe, there was a firm that took care of it that was out of Texas. And it was really hard to get them back to do warranty work. It, they weren't close by, so to, to do any warranty work, they would, they would schedule it as they were coming through town to go do a track in Valdosta or something like that. And you would just, you might have to wait three or four months. Uh, and so we, we, we felt it was important to have somebody fairly local that we felt like could, uh, respond to us if there were some warranty issues.
Hey Mike, when we installed the turf fields, um, I remember we're being very, very careful with the tracks at that time. Did we do anything to the tracks when we installed the turf fields or just, just protected them?
Yes, sir. Just put down, yes, sir. But we tried to protect them, but they were already
We didn't resurface them at that time?
No, sir. We did not resurface them at that time. They're, they're, um, even our track coaches, um, and they, they sat in, in the room, meeting room with us the other day and, and pretty much concurred with us with, with the order they felt like needed to be done. And I was very pleased with our coaches. You know, typically you would expect them to say, I need mine done now. And that wasn't it at all. Um, had, had one, he said, I, mine, mine will be fine until next summer. We have two others that are a lot worse shape than mine. Specifically Whitewater and McIntosh were the two.
Yeah, and it, it either I, I will say one thing, um, looking long-term, the fact that we've put in the artificial turf on the football fields is going to pay back huge dividends on the track surfaces. Cause basically, uh, the, the abuse that we've seen over the years on the tracks came from folks trying to maintain a new work on the football field. So we've eliminated that. So that, uh, that should help. And several of the coaches mentioned that at the meeting that they thought that would help a lot. And, um, the, the company, uh, when we had the meeting with the coaches, we, we had the, uh, the one firm with us. And, uh, they made recommendations as far as putting, uh, tarps or pads down to protect the track, uh, at where the players cross and things of that nature.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, my only concern on this would be the timeliness in finishing the tracks. I don't know about McIntosh's schedule, but I know Whitewater, two of their first three games are home. And if you can't have that home game, that really affects your athletic budget.
Yeah.
They'll be able to have, they'll be able to have the game.
Yeah.
They, they'll, they'll be ready, but I've, I've heard that before.
I won't, I won't say they'll, they'll be ready, but, but they can have the, they can play a football game.
They can play the football game if the track is not finished.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. I thought that if they were still working on the track, they couldn't play the game.
Because they even talked about that they would work with, the question came from the coaches is if they needed to use the, the field for football practice or whatever in the summer. And they said they, they could work, they didn't want any kids out there while equipment was running. But if they needed two hours, they could schedule their day accordingly. So it, it won't look finished. Uh, and it'll look, I mean, there'll be equipment out there and whatnot, but they can still have a football game.
Right.
Yeah. I wasn't concerned about the practice. I was concerned about the game.
They can still have a game.
Okay.
But it will not, it more than likely won't be finished by the time the first game gets here. I want to make that clear.
And, and you know, really what you're looking at, uh, there, you, you either, you could get an early start like in mid-May. As soon as track's over with, you could start tearing it apart, but then, you know, at graduation, it looks bad. I think we prefer on the other end. Uh, basically it takes them just a, a less than a week to tear out the old track and about two weeks to put a new one in. But if they have to make repairs to the asphalt, if they do that, there's a four-week cure period where that, the new asphalt has to cure out for four weeks before they can lay. So you could be looking at a three or four-week project or a eight or nine-week project depending on if you have to make repairs to the, to the existing base.
Um, and the quicker we can get going on this, the better we're going to be.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Satterfield. Um, just for board information, uh, we've, uh, still looking at our two-year calendar cycle. Uh, I will share with you, we've had just under three thousand parent responses and we've had over a thousand staff responses. Uh, we think it's going to be calendar B at this point. We'll bring that to you in, in, uh, the, at the June board meeting. Uh, but the feedback has been good. Um, our parents, um, and our staff seem to be, uh, supportive of the, the professional learning day on the, um, the presidential election, and I think that'll be a good thing. Uh, and we also have some, uh, online learning or digital learning days built into the calendar as well. So all of those seem to be pretty, uh, positive items. We will bring that to you in, uh, on June seventeenth, uh, for your consideration and vote. Unless there are any questions there, I'll move on to item E. We're talking about attendance and enrollment reports. Um, we finished the year, uh, May twenty-fourth, we had twenty thousand eight hundred and eighty-five students. That's over two hundred more students compared to twenty eighteen. So we're, uh, excited about that little tick up in enrollment. Uh, if there are no questions there, I will mention the, um, guaranteed maximum price for the Oak Grove Elementary site work. Uh, we've communicated, I know with the board, um, earlier this week about, uh, proceeding and uh, going ahead and, and doing this portion of the work there. I know we have not approved the project at this point, but the architectural and engineering fees and the site work, that really is going to need to be done, uh, regardless of, of when we actually do the project. So uh, we've got that as an action item, but the every day counts and, uh, being able to move forward on that would be, uh, a huge benefit. Uh, the problem that we have is, uh, you know, we've talked about this many times before is the, the window of time, six to eight weeks in the summer is not a lot of time to do the projects that we have, the scope of the projects we have. So every day counts. So we'll bring that to you down in the action item, but I wanted to put it out there to see if you had any questions for, uh, with Mike or, uh, Mr. Satterfield, Mr. Sanders, either one.
Can you refresh my, is, is the purpose of this just renovation? We're just renovating?
Well, no, sir. There's, um, renovation is, is one big piece of the project, but we're actually, um, Oak Grove is the only school that doesn't have any kind of stage. Uh, we've got some, um, uh, effort to, um, move more of the front of the school, uh, back on the, on the, where the backside is actually. That will become the front of the school. I think that we did that, uh, uh, a traffic, uh, flip a couple of years ago because Peachtree City really was concerned about the volume of traffic there on Crosstown. And this will just help us, uh, dress that up a little bit more. Uh, any, any other comments, guys, I want to make?
Gym, new gym.
And it's, and it's the new gym as well. So I
This is just, it looks like it's just paving.
This is, this is the site work and the engineering and architectural fees. Uh, the total project, uh, will be somewhere around, uh, ten to eleven million dollars. That's what we tentatively budgeted, but uh, we won't know that until we actually have the, the drawings and the, uh, construction manager, uh, at risk folks value engineering and bring us this guaranteed maximum price. So we hope to have that ready, you know, you think we can buy August or before?
August.
Uh, so we'll, we'll be coming back, but if we don't get started with the site prep work, we, it'll be all the way next year before we can really get in and do that. Mike, comment?
One thing, Dr. Barrett, that's come to light, uh, just in the last two weeks that is, is really following in your lap and it is, is going to work out very well for us is that Peachtree City is doing some renovations on their ball fields next door. And, uh, I think they refer to that as the Braylon.
Braylon Field.
And with our work, we were going to have a surplus of about twenty-two thousand cubic yards of dirt that we were going to have to haul off. That's just about exactly what they need next door and we're graciously going, graciously going to put it on.
You're a good man. But, and they're ready to start yesterday. So it's, uh,
So this, this will actually be a considerable savings to us and that we don't have to load and haul that dirt off-site. Uh, so this is going to be a win-win for, for both of us. Uh, and they're actually going to help out with some paving of, of the track and, and some other things there on that project. So I think that's going to work out good for both us and the city of Peachtree City.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we have moved to, uh, item G and, um, we have a recommendation uh, for the board to consider moving some capital project funds, um, out of our operational reserve uh, into our capital project money. Uh, we know that there's going to be some funding, uh, uh, effort uh, with some of these other new projects coming down the road and, uh, we wanted to go ahead and move this money near market for capital projects. So uh, this is something for your review. Tom, uh, any, any comments or questions you want to make to the board? This is, we typically do this every year. Uh, this is a little more money. Uh, generally it's at least a million dollars every year. We're looking at roughly five million this year. Um, and, uh, feel like if we can go ahead and move it over into the capital projects, that'll, that'll save that money for the, the upcoming projects that we have.
Yeah, Dr. Barrett, this will be available for any project that's not on Splosh or if we needed to supplement any Splosh projects with, uh, additional funds.
Correct.
Is this, this is on the prior, this past year's budget?
Yeah, this is on the, on the current year, twenty, you have the twenty nineteen budget.
So the operational budget where we've got
We had a little over our ten percent, right?
Correct. Uh, and we'll pull that over into capital projects.
Okay.
Um, last but not least is, um, the FY twenty budget review. I know Mr. Gray has, uh, continued to work on that. Uh, we gave our initial presentation at our, um, last board meeting. And, uh, certainly, um, this is an opportunity for the board to give us feedback and ask any other questions that you might have. Tom, I don't know if, uh, unless the board wants us to, I don't know that we need to go back through the presentation again. But we're happy to answer any questions or concerns or, uh, that you've had with that presentation now that you've had it to a chance to look at it for the last couple of weeks.
Tom, one of the things I asked you at the last meeting was, um, that fund balance above reserve. And we, you know, I was asking how much a mill was. So looking at this, I know, I know we may not be able to fund a rollback, you know, which has been one of the discussions that's been going around, but it seems like, is that a statistically significant amount in your mind that we can, you know, from a millage standpoint? What, what's a mill with this digested?
We're asking an opinion, I can, I can give you, I can give you
Well, first question, what's a mill?
Yeah, I can give you the numbers. Well, um, a quarter mill is about one point four million dollars.
So if I make it one point five, so call it six, call it six then. So do we, in prior years, have we intentionally gone over the ten percent, like to do things like this capital projects or is it more of a buffer in case things don't go the way we want them or?
Well, I, I really probably defer to Dr. Barrett because it's something that we've worked on together as far as, uh, staying above the ten percent. Um, that, so that we don't fall into the situation where we have to eat into fund balance any, uh, unless it's required. We did eat into fund balance, uh, at least budgetarily, we have in the past, um, had a deficit budget, which means that we would eat into fund balance. We've used this money when we've had it, um, usually because of a positive budget variance, um, to also fund capital, local capital projects.
Which makes sense. I, I guess my, my question is, and I asked about the, the military, it's hard when we do this planning when we don't know how much money we have and, you know, we decide what we need, then we figure out how to pay for it. But, um, which I would like to do at my house, by the way. But looking at this, it just seems, I, I don't see a way to get where everybody wants to get the mythical, you know, complete rollback, but it does seem like there's a, there's a reasonable overage, right? Would you say, Dr. Barrett, I mean, I'm gonna, I don't have the experience you do, but it's just, I've been trying to look at the past budgets to see how much do we normally have and what do we normally spend? And, you know, keep in mind the ten percent unless we think the ten percent is not enough.
Well, uh, you know, everybody's crystal ball is, is probably as, as good as mine is. I, I feel good about the policy the board put into place, um, I don't know, almost six years ago. And, uh, basically that was, is that we would have ten percent of our operating budget that we would put into a strategic reserve. And that money has continued to grow a little bit every year. Um, and, and I feel good about it. Now, if, if the bottom fell out tomorrow, uh, really that, that, uh, what, twenty-nine million dollars, twenty-eight million dollars, somewhere right around there is, that's not going to keep us operating, but maybe a couple of months. Uh, hopefully that's never going to happen. Um, that money is there for the board to use if, if they feel the need to be able to use that. Now, the other reserve that we've had is the operational reserve and that's when Tom talks about, uh, looking at spending or building a budget based on the deficit. The intent was to lower that operational reserve down, um, much lower than it had been. And it, it's been a, a, And it, it's been a, a lot higher than it is currently. So we're at a point where I feel like if we know we're gonna have some additional projects, and, and we knew, we've built the five-year strategic or capital project plan, the five-year facility plan, we had, I don't know, ultimately was it what, Mike, eighty-five million dollars worth of projects? Was that right? And, and we only had seventy million dollars we could allocate. So we knew we had more projects than we had money to spend, but we prioritized, and we continue to eat the elephant that one bite at a time. And that's what, when we have this operational reserve, we feel like it's appropriate to have a little bit of money just in case there are emergencies that come along or, or real intense needs, like what you've done in supplying some additional resources for some of our schools that were struggling. Well, we built that into the budget, so we don't feel like there's as much need for that now, but we do see these capital outlay projects coming, and that's the reason why we're recommending that budget amendment to push five million dollars over into capital projects. That'll bring.
But that's last year's money though, right?
It's the money that we have coming out of FY nineteen. And what that will do for us is it'll bring the operational reserve down to a little over a million dollars, just in case there's any major concerns or, or problems. We maintain the strategic reserve based on your policy, and we also have capital monies ready to supplement the East Bloss dollars when we look at these bigger projects that are coming up. And I, I say all that to say this, we still feel like we can actually look at a quarter of a mill reduction. And that's, again, Tom just said, that's over a million dollars, so we feel comfortable in putting it at a, at a quarter of a mill. And we're also looking at a real small decrease of the, the bond millage as well. So we've done a millage reduction, a quarter of a mill, two times, and we've done the millage reduction one time. This year, we're talking about another quarter of a mill reduction and also a small percentage of the, the bond millage. So we're pulling it down now.
Let me stop just so I can, so we're at nineteen and a half right now, right?
That is correct.
And that would put us to nineteen and a quarter. So if the, and I'm just thinking strategically down the road. So Barry and I had a really good discussion about this, this morning. And so what if the market crashes, right? You know, which could happen, right? None of us know, of course. By having it lower, not for the sake of lowering it, by having it lower, it gives us the ability to raise the mill rate in future years when we need that money to avoid layoffs or school closings, right? Or is that fair to say?
Well, the, the issue for us is, is the board, that you have complete control over raising and lowering the millage. It doesn't make sense for us to ask the taxpayer to pay for an increase. It does make sense for us to roll it back, but not to the point of prohibiting us from continuing to, to improve quality programs and/or to upgrade our facilities where needed. And that's, we're trying to find that balance there. You know, if we were looking at trying to operate our system on the minimum amount, that means, you know, not quite ninety percent of our budget salary and benefits. If we're gonna cut back a full rollback, we, we would have to be, we'd have to start laying off employees. We'd have to raise class size in order to be able to do that. And I, you know, I know we've talked about pros and cons about that, and I, I would hope that we wouldn't have to do that. I think our community wants a quality educational program, and they're willing to invest in it. But I, I also understand the concern that folks have with increases. And, you know, the vast majority of the budget increase that we've got is really in teacher salaries.
A lot of it's state mandated. It's not even, I don't see us voting hundreds and hundreds of new positions here.
So that's, I mean, that's the, that's the gist. And I don't, I don't think anybody's questioning the merit of giving our teachers a raise. I, I think everybody's supportive of that, but that's where the biggest chunk, that and step increases, that's where the biggest chunk of the increase is coming from.
Well, and, you know, I, I think there's a significant percentage of our population that would prefer we spend that quarter mill on a parapro in each elementary school. So, you know, we've talked about this budget for a long time. I mean, you know, starting with class sizes at the very beginning. So to make substantial changes now is.
Well, I mean, I would argue that it's not us, but it's the process that's flawed. It's, you know, and we have talked about it a bunch, and I don't disagree. I, I just think when we do it, we're still talking about it, we're supposed to vote on it at the next meeting, and I'm fairly happy with the budget. I was just curious, because we had spoken about a millage reduction before. I'm not talking about a rollback, but I was talking about a, a gradual reduction, and I saw it as a benefit in the future years when our crystal ball may not be accurate, but we will have some downturn. Everybody knows it, it's just when. And if, if they're lower, it gives us the ability to raise when we need it. And if we're sitting at nineteen, seven, five, or twenty.
I think we've chosen this level of expenditures, and I think.
Well, I just want to talk about the strategic reserve for a second, the, the ten percent being above. I mean, that is giving us flexibility.
The twenty-two, the twenty-two, nine?
Yeah, the ten percent, the ten percent. Because that helps with rising healthcare costs, pension contributions, which we don't really control either of those. If we do have a reception, recession, it could help us from laying off teachers and other things like that. So I think that does give us a lot of flexibility.
I fully support, I think we all agree with the ten percent. I'm talking about the bottom number. If you look on the sheet, I'm talking about the six point five eight four, comma, five nine four number, which is called fund balance above the ten percent.
Which is why we're talking about transferring that to capital.
We're talking about the five, the five million, which is why I brought it up right now, because it seemed applicable at this point in the discussion. And I, and I brought it up previously to Tom, but I don't have the answer. I'm just having the discussion, because it, you know, the value is the discussion, really. And, and I know Dr. Barrow, Dr. Barrow knows a little more than I do on how we're really gonna use that excess. But like Scott said, if we have the ten percent, is this, what is that? Let's, is it, is that another three? Is that what that is? No, it's another, that's another four percent, right? The fund balance after reserve, is that? Three, three-ish? I'm just, yeah, so it's, yeah, thirty.
Which, which is why I think it's appropriate to transfer that to capital projects. I mean, you know, without, before there was East Bloss, all the money for capital projects had to come from that number, right?
Oh, I agree.
And that number also comes from the fact that as an institution, right, we conservatively budget each year. And so, you know, we generally have a small amount left because we're good at budgeting, but, you know, like good budgeters, we always spend a little bit less and we get a little bit more in. And so that number accumulates. I think, you know, we've talked about a whole lot of capital projects up here that, you know, we don't have the revenue source to pay for all of the things that, that we want and.
No, I mean, my only question, and it wasn't definitive, but I think it's worthy discussion, is maybe it's part of that money is a millage cut and part of that money is, as you guys described, into that, into the capital projects account. I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about a tax on money that we're gonna sit in an account that we're not even sure what projects we're gonna spend it on right now. I'm sure we could come up with a list, give us about an hour, but.
But, right, so we could have a negative, right? A budget that has more expenditures than, you know, so from a long-term standpoint, is that, is that the kind of budgets we want to produce?
Well, we always have the ten percent, so even if we went negative a mill or a million and a half.
Right, so how, how close do you wanna, how close do you wanna do it? That's a, it's, that's a strategic question.
I defer, yeah, I defer to Tom, I mean, I don't know.
Well, one thing to remember about the ten percent reserve, the board policy requires, if we go below that amount, we immediately have to put a plan in place to restore that reserve amount. So that would require us to, you know.
Change the policy, yeah.
So I guess the bigger question is, is the three extra percent too much, just right, or not enough? I mean, that, that's the question, right? I mean, I, you know, I.
It's your call.
I, I say it's slightly too much, not, not a hundred percent, but slightly. I think there's probably a happy medium, you know, where you can do both. I don't think we could do rollback a point and a half based on this, but we could roll a quarter, like you, like Dr. Barrett said.
Yeah, well, and I, we, we haven't, I mean, I've indicated in some of the correspondence I've sent you is, is looking at the quarter mill cut, and we really haven't talked about the, the bond millage, but we think we can handle that with the East Bloss proceeds moving forward. So I want to be as conservative as I can, but I don't want to tie the board's hands down the road saying, well, we want to go ahead and do this project or, let me, let me just, you know, this is just right off the top of my head. Let's say if we decide to build a replacement school, and we were enamored with the presentation that we had from the young men at Booth, and we wanted to do solar, or we wanted to do, make the building LEED certified. Well, I can tell you, those construction costs go way up. Now, you see over the length of the building, you'll have lots of savings on utilities, but as far as getting a maximum guaranteed price, if you build in those things, that's gonna cost you more. I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I mean, those are the kinds of things that we have latitude to do now, where in the times past, we didn't have any latitude. I think the strategic reserve, if we hold to the original intent of that, we never touch that, never. Can we touch it? Absolutely. The board has the authority to waive the policy and reinstate whatever fiduciary responsibility you want to have. Could be eight percent. Ten percent is reasonable. I think the state has a maximum calculation of about fifteen percent. They don't want, we're not trying to hoard money, I can tell you that. But I, I feel like good management, we, we want to have enough to be able to operate just in case. The operational reserve is where we have some flexibility. Again, that number, when, when we first started, it was, I don't know, eleven, twelve million dollars, Tom? I think that may have been the highest somewhere, and that, we could go back and get that for sure, but we've drawn that down. Now, we've had a, had a bump up for a couple of reasons. One, we had an uptick in enrollment. Two, the state is now meeting their obligation in not having austerity cuts. So that's helped us a good bit. That's the reason why I think we're ready for another rollback of about a quarter of a mill. I feel comfortable in doing that. If we feel like we need to do more, I wouldn't want to do a whole lot more than that. In fact, I, I, Tom and I have kind of arm wrestled over that. We feel a quarter of a mill is reasonable. We can handle that and, and, and still be able to do the, the capital project amendment and push that over. I, I feel comfortable in recommending that to y'all. That's, that's my thinking off the top of my head.
Got it.
I just want to add that I've received a lot of positive feedback from people I've interacted with the past couple of weeks. So I just want to stand by my previous comments. And I just want to add that over the past six years, we've increased our portion of the property tax about fifty percent. So ten thousands become fifteen thousand, or thousands become fifteen hundred. And that's a trend that can't continue. And we have the money necessary to do our programs, have a huge cash reserve. And like Leonard said, we've been talking about this for a long time, and my position's been clear.
Sure.
And I just can't support a budget that's gonna require us to take even more from my friends and neighbors than we took last year.
What, what are you suggesting that we cut from our budget? I'm just curious.
If we, we don't have to cut anything if we use that reserve, or maybe as we add programs.
Do you mean the strategic, the bottom number?
Yeah, the operational.
So you're suggesting that we just.
I'm not suggesting anything. I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is that we give our staff a dollar amount and that they figure which programs are the ones we keep and which ones we throw away, because we just keep adding programs.
Okay.
And some programs we might not be as effective and, but, you know, you can't keep adding, adding, adding and never dropping.
Yeah, well, you, you also can't magically tell someone else to come up with budget cuts either. So, you know, I would think, I would think after eight years on the board, if you had a suggestion for how we would save money that we could do it.
We shouldn't be getting into the details. We should be talking about high level. And so as per your suggestion, I'm talking about high level. This is the dollar amount that I'm willing to commit to. And how, which programs, which staffing levels, that's up to Dr. Barrett to decide. That's a personnel decision.
Okay.
And I thought we were in agreement on that, part of the argument at least.
But it, but it would, I mean, so would you would say take the strategic reserve down to like four or five percent? Not ten?
No, no, the budgetary reserve, I think everybody's saying ten. We're talking about the.
We have a huge budgetary reserve. We have capital reserves that minor might not use. There, there's a lot of money floating around here that we could, I just don't think we need to ask for more this year. I think we've got plenty to do, we've asked the school system to do.
But you'd be okay with personnel cuts? Because that's ninety percent of the budget.
If that is related to programs that we don't need anymore. I'm not saying we have to cut anything. I'm saying we've got plenty of money already to do what we need to do.
So, well, um, so you're saying that we should just do the same thing for less money?
Maybe we should have a deficit budget, budget a year or two until we get our reserves down to, we've taken more money than we need from the taxpayers, and we've got these huge reserves. I know your preference would be to add more programs. My preference would be to give, give our customers, our paying customers.
Your preference would be to magically spend less money, I, I understand that.
No, not magically spend, that's very condescending, but that is not what I'm talking about. Not magically spend less money. I'm asking the staff to give me a plan to stay within a boundary. I think our job as fiduciaries is to set boundaries for our staff and, you know, get the job done within this boundary, and that's all I'm asking.
But, and, and the discussion is, is healthy. The, the issue is, again, I, I think it comes back to things that we can control and things that we can't. Our, our exemptions have continued to grow. So we're being squeezed on that end, and I'm not saying that it's not appropriate for our elderly not to have a break, but that number has consistently grown. That's impacting us. The, the issue, thankfully, we're in better shape this year with the amount the state is funding. It's still, though, the larger percentage of, of the local cost of education is based on taxpayer revenue, and that's particularly based on property tax. Now, we don't, we don't do anything with appraisals. That's not the Board of Education. We set our millage rate based on what it's gonna take to fund this budget. I, I think that we can fund the budget with a, a slight reduction this year. We'll go back and, and look at the calculations again. I will say this, it's a lot easier having that operational reserve category than I can come back to you and say, we have a real need, there's a real problem somewhere. Maybe we have a, heaven forbid, but a tornado come through. We, we need to buy something, you know.
I would change board policy immediately from that ten percent is what I would do.
But, but the issue is a lot, a lot simpler with that operational reserve. It's easier for us to manage, I will put it that way.
Sure.
But I, I also know that I want to have high-quality programs here. There are a lot of things that we would like to do that, that we haven't put on the table just because we're trying to live within our budget. There are a lot of staff that people have requested, our folks have requested, because they see that it would benefit them, but I also understand we've got our fiduciary responsibilities. So it is a balancing act. We can, we can go back and look at that just a wee bit more and see how that comes out. I can communicate that with the board as we move, move through to the recommendation on the seventeen.
Dr. Barrett, on the fund balance, if I understand it, six point five eight four. If we reduce a quarter, we still have enough money to do the capital projects move that you guys requested, right?
That's one thing, this, this budget that's been developed that you're approving already includes the assumption of a quarter mill reduction.
So, so then I would argue that we could do a half based on that, if, if that's the true. I would argue if we had another quarter off that six-five, wouldn't we be around five, five point one or two roughly? Which would still allow us to do the capital projects in it over the ten percent, I think.
Is that a?
But I may be wrong, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, I just think.
The question is, is, is that a, is that a long-term? What are the long? What are the long-term implications of deciding to do a one-time, hey, we're gonna use this money for our operating budget versus we're gonna use this extra money for a special capital thing? If you use that extra money for your regular budget, what are you gonna do next year?
If we use the extra money for our capital project, which is what I'm talking about.
If you, if you reduce the millage rate and use that reserve to fund your regular budget, then you can't do that in another year.
But Leonard, if we have five-point-two after this hypothetical reduction, that's his extra, that's extra, extra on top of the whole budget, right? That allows us to have-
Do, do you understand what I'm, right, it's a limited time option.
Yeah, I don't, I understand that. I don't think what you're saying, though, is I don't think if we reduce it to, down to that fund balance, down to say five or five-point-two, that, that that's gonna affect anything else.
We're already talking about taking five million and putting it to cap, right?
Well, next year, the assessors will take care of us again and give us a seven percent raise, and we'll only take six percent of it, because we'll do another millage reduction. That's been our pattern.
Well, you'll, you'll argue for another rollback, right? I mean, you know, well, I mean, but until you come up with a practical way to do that, I think we're in the same spot.
And there may not be a practical way, but there's a very visible way to me. Dr. Barrow already found a quarter, a quarter mil, which, which is excellent, right? But we still have six-point-five. We still have six-point-five. If you had another quarter, for math's sake.
But if, but if you move the five to capital projects, that six-point-five goes down to one. And then that's the concern that, that you know, what's your margin? What's your comfort level there? And that's, that's my concern. We're talking about moving the five already. That hadn't been done yet. You're still seeing it there. If the board approves that, that five will go into the capital projects pot, and that number will be one point something.
I mean, Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems, my memory might be failing me, but it seems like every year, that one million fund balance above reserve turns into ten billion by the end of the year. It just seems to balloon over the year.
It, it gets better depending upon, and see, another thing, too, that happened this year that we don't normally have is that at midterm, we had an adjustment because our enrollment ticked up, and where it was in three, four-hundred thousand, it was like one-point-five.
Yes.
So that was a good thing. That was a nice problem to have. So that's first, you know, there are just a lot of variables in this equation, and I want us to budget conservatively, but I, by the same token, I don't want us to be so conservative that if we have a need to help children, we can't do that. That's, that's the bottom line for me.
Are there enough projects of the highest priority, you think, to need the five? Based on the list that you guys have reviewed?
Depending upon how fast we wanna go. I know we've talked about a wing in Inman. I know we've talked about a wing at Whitewater, you know, that-
Orchester.
Well, and, and a lot of other things. And a lot of that depends upon the priorities of the board. I think we have a good facilities project in place. And, you know, we're, we're clearing bunches of hurdles, but I can tell you this, if we hadn't had some of those monies in place, we wouldn't have been able to put the the Fed auditorium in, you know, and I think everybody's ecstatic about that. I think it's a great project. And there are other projects like that, so.
Yeah, I think we've all been very supportive of adding resources to improve student achievement, and yet we still have a pretty amazing cash reserve.
We do a good job.
Y'all do. Y'all are amazing.
But let, let us, you know, if, if the direction of the board is to squeeze out a little bit more on the millage side, you know, we'll go back and sharpen our pencils. I just, I feel comfortable with recommending to you today the quarter mil cut and the adjustment, the slight adjustment in the bond millage. I can tell you, I feel like we can do that and be okay. We'll go back and look again.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I we haven't voted. I'm not sure it's the consensus of-
No, I think it's fairly obviously split. I agree with Leonard on that, and and I don't know if we'll ever get to a hundred percent agreement on it. I know there's philosophical differences I get.
Sure.
I'm just saying, in my mind, we can do a minor reduction in the spirit of doing of, of meeting both sides and still meet all the requested items on here, just looking at it. Maybe we move four million instead of five million to capital projects for these projects that we haven't spoke about. That's all. That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying it's worthy of discussion. I'm not here, I don't have all the right answers, but if we don't talk about it here, it doesn't happen, guys. Right? I mean, that's, that's how it goes. We gotta talk about it.
Yeah, I did a whole lot of listening, and I tend to agree with Mr. Anderson about, you know, I understand the quarter mil, but maybe four instead of five and go into a half mil. I don't have a problem with that.
It's like a win-win. I mean, I don't know how we get to a rollback as much as everybody, I suspect most of us would wanna do that, but I don't see a mathematical way to get there. But I do see a way to get to a half without hurting the items, but I'm if I'm wrong, show me or tell me.
Well, let us, let us, let us go back and look.
I mean, are we sure that the state is gonna fully fund us next year?
I think that's a bad, long-term financial choice to me.
Lowering the quarter point?
To, to choose to use some of that money to fund the operational budget, I think, in the long term.
See, but I don't see us using anything for the operational, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm missing, we could talk about it, but I I'm just saying we have excess money beyond the operational, is how I'm reading it, and Tom, I mean, is there not six-point-five-eight-four million extra?
Yeah, so let's say you decided to lower the millage another quarter mil, which would leave us a million and a half dollars short on the revenue that we've built the budget on. So we would take it out of fund balance. We would take it out of past revenue, so it would be a deficit budget for the year. So you would be taking it out of, you know, the money.
And that's your-
Then the next year, you, you know, you're already starting in the hole on the revenue, so you have to make up for that revenue just to break even. That's, I think, part of the concern going forward, but yeah, you, there's if you, we could approve a deficit budget that would use some of the fund balance.
And that's what we've done over the last several years.
We did that two years ago.
Yeah. Let us continue to work on it. We'll bring some suggestions back to you. Probably had some conversation prior to the next board meeting, but I, I feel good. I feel positive about the quarter mil cut, so I don't want that to go unnoticed. I-
No, I agree, Dr. Barrow.
We've, we've made a good faith effort, effort and estimate to be able to get to that point. We'll, we'll have some more conversation and see where we go. Mr. Hollowell, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Okay. Now is the time for budget public comments. If anybody in the publics here would like to get up and speak about the budget. All right, having no takers, we'll move on to personnel.
Okay, we have our personnel report. This is fairly common at this point in time of the year, where we have a lot of staff retirements, resignations, reclassifications. We have some elections and separation. I would like to mention that we have two of our assistant principal positions at the high school, one at McIntosh and one at Sandy Creek. We've got recommendations for those folks. We'll have them come at our regular board meeting, so you can meet them. But the personnel position is there. We would recommend, and you've had a, had a chance to review that, so we'd recommend the board approve personnel as submitted.
Need a motion?
Some moves.
Second.
All in favor? Five-oh.
Looking at our action items, we have a guaranteed maximum price. We discussed this earlier in the report for the Oak Grove Elementary site project work. That includes architectural and engineering fees along with the site project work, and it's been budgeted at a recommendation for two million dollars. That is East Bloss funding.
Need a motion?
Some moved. Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? Five-oh.
Okay, and item seven B, Mr. Hollowell, is the board to be allowed to give official approval of the May twenty board meeting minutes. I would recommend the board approve this submitted.
Need a motion?
Some moved. Second.
All in favor? Five-oh.
Okay, and last but not least, we do have a couple of items, I think, will be very quick with regard to personnel and property, and would recommend the board go into executive session for that.
Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and property?
Some moved. Second.
All in favor? Five-oh. Right, need a motion to come back from executive session?
Second.
All in favor? Five-oh. Dr. Barrow, any recommendations?
No, sir. No recommendations at this time.
Okay, without objection, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys.